I have some of these left.
Good evening, welcome to the January 6th, 2015 Meeting of the Planning Board. I'd like to call the meeting to order with a Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Let's start with a roll call, members present, Mike Caprileo, Chairman.
Tom Young, Vice Chair.
Bob Curtis, Member.
Russell Blanchett, Member.
Absentee this evening, Mike Crotto, Member, Kevin Bork, Member, and Jason Garrett, Altona. I'd like to open it for a public input. Here are no public input, I will close public input. The first item on the agenda is impact fees. Alright, so we have an updated draft.
It's the same draft you looked at.
Okay, so what's the, this evening, just to prepare for?
To kind of loop back.
Yep.
To the topic.
Yep.
Since you met with Jill a month ago and looked at this, I've chatted with Bruce Mayberry and Jason. From Jason's perspective is that something needs to happen before the CIP is adopted. Because the impact fee schedules that are currently in effect are the ones that were last updated just over a year ago now. We did not do the whole cost escalator adjustment to the old set of tables because the Mayberry reports were to be issued at approximately the same timetable as when you would have otherwise updated. So we've got kind of the old schedules still in effect, we've got the new studies completed, and if you look at them in terms of the study, the studies themselves, you know, you've got schools are complete, roads are complete, police, fire, town office, library, those ones, they were all pretty much so sat and squared away. It was recreation that was still the wild card. And so just kind of following up with Jason regards to the process on the CIP, because that was the big outstanding question, felt that the most appropriate course of action would be to go with the one option of the recreation options that had the lowest fee amount because there is currently no definitive long-range planning for specific recreation improvements beyond what's there in that smallest fee schedule. Now, were that to change in the future, were the CIP process to come out with something else? That's why you've got the alternatives in the board is to do that annual review. So come August, September, it'd be back in front of the board to look at it if the CIP presented something else. Then you could say, okay, we're updating at this point, we're going to shift to this other methodology at that time. Felt that that would be kind of a safe course of action. So what I did though to kind of pull it together and just try and see it all put together is I took and just compiled the, just on a one-pager, what the schools, roads, and then the town facilities were based on the different reports, just pulling it together based on what you had discussed and what you had selected thus far, and had just, to kind of show what the smallness of what was remaining to be done, this was the one blank that had to be filled in, was just this one number for recreation. So you guys did have quite a bit done. Putting the recreation aside. The other thing I did, just, because it was something that was discussed at the onset of the process, was how do the fees compare to what's out there in other communities? And I gotta say, not everybody puts their impact fee schedules online. So, short of calling different towns to request their impact fee schedules, did a quick search for several different communities to see what I could find, and just did comparisons, just got a little, there's a spreadsheet posted up there, and I went through, you know, each of the different fee types and tried to kind of pull those comps for the different fee schedules. You know, what it comes down to is some that you have proposed are definitely higher, some are definitely lower than surrounding communities, and there is no real, you can't really say that there's any specific trend from one community to the next.
You don't know for Bedford with the 1466 is because the house is so much more expensive in Bedford versus the price per square foot?
So Bedford's is assessed at a flat rate. So each single-family house is assessed exactly 1466. So part of that could be that the average size of the house is larger. It could be that the perceived impact or due to new development is greater, or it could be those specific facility types that are foreseen as being greatest need are more costly than others. There's a, you know, a whole host of reasons why one town's fees might be higher or lower than another.
Is it safe to assume that the methodology that goes into coming up with the fees varies from town to town?
It is. I know that Lebanon was definitely a Bruce Mayberry product, so it's going to be a very similar methodology. But again, like, as you saw how he put the report together for you, while the methodology looks somewhat boilerplate from town to town, it's the actual inputs into the table that do vary. None of the other communities I found had road fees in effect. I mean, as I said, though, I pulled four towns, so it's not like the most robust comparison.
So this evening, Jason needs us to do, to commit to, a numbers of the schedule to go into place for next year?
Either this evening or sometime in the near future, I would assume.
Do that this evening, and then we'll see why we can't.
That's, okay, so process-wise, eating here, is that generally how it's been done, and what we did a year ago, is just each time you made a step along the way and kind of we could document one, checking off one more step in the process, sent a memo to the Board of Selectmen. So like last fall, Mike, we worked to just document up what was selected for, what was it? Roads and, roads and schools, and sent a memo to the selectmen with that information along with an update on progress on Phase Two. So now we need to kind of just send something that says, here's what we've done on Phase Two, and if you want to send it all to hearing and are ready to do so, I assume we could bundle that with things for the next, the upcoming hearing, or has that already gone?
It's gone.
It's gone? So it's too late?
You mean that letter to the selectmen?
No, for, to do, if we were to do impact fee methodologies.
Yeah, it's gone. Well, we noticed has to be there by Wednesday. It would have to be a hundred hours. The board sent that memo.
Okay.
Does this go to the ballot eventually?
No.
This is not time-sensitive to deliberative then?
No, it is not time-sensitive to deliberative. But procedurally, the board holds a hearing, collects any public input on the fee schedules, and then sends a recommendation to the selectmen, who then they do that final process and adopt. So in this case, you would be not only looking at the selected schedules, but also the methodology documents themselves as well. So those, so it'd be the two reports plus the tables that would be part of that hearing and recommendation to the selectmen.
So it's too late for the next meeting, do you want to do that the first meeting in February? Do we have any applications or anything you know of then?
No, we don't.
Is that good for you, Joan?
Works for me.
Is it, we have enough done now that? Is there any further discussion this evening as to what we want to do for the number to get that done in place? Because we have to have something solid to put to public hearing, right?
Right.
We have to commit to a number?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, what you've got and what you've looked at so far is on that one-pager of tables. You know, if you looked at it and said, you know, to be honest, like, use the schools for example, you were presented with elementary, middle school, and high school. And you said, you know what, we don't need to be collecting fees on elementary schools, even though we do have a methodology to do so, we have a fee schedule to do so, we don't need to be collecting fees on elementary schools. That was a decision that you made. So that is a legitimate choice that you can make for any of these on the table. So if you looked at these and said, you know what, based on the rationale provided, it doesn't make sense to be doing, you know, collecting fees for certain things, you can, you can go that route.
So the 62 cents that's in here currently? That was the number, just to refresh my memory, that came from that meeting by going the lower, that was the lower threshold for the two, the couple possibilities that Mr. Mayberry presented?
Yeah, that was Option One.
Yep, okay. And I think we agree that day that Option One was what we wanted to do? I think we should just go forward with the 62 cents? Since we already decided Option One was the direction we wanted to begin with? Do we have to take a motion and a vote?
Trying to think what you did. Trying to think what you did last fall. If you, you definitely have to take a motion to send it all to hearing. But in terms of like, just for the police, fire, town office, library, recreation, I'm trying to remember if you-
I don't think we did it individually.
Yeah, no, but I don't know if you made a motion to say, we like these, you know, just to kind of-
I think we did a motion to take Number One a month ago, didn't we? Was that just conversation?
Just conversation.
Why don't we, just to cover, why don't we make a motion to select Option One of the 62 cents per square foot?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we select Option One for impact fees.
Or Recreation? Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 4-0-0. And so now that we've completed that last piece of the puzzle, then we send this whole thing to public hearing?
Yes, you'll be sending the proposed impact fee schedules for schools, roads, police, fire, town office, library, recreation to hearing along with the two associated methodology reports.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries 4-0-0. And that would be for the first meeting in February. Thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda. We have outreach for town meeting, warrant articles deliberative session, which will take place on January 31st. And is there, is this more just a review of the documents that you posted up? Or is this more of a discussion as to what we want seen for this?
What do you want to do?
Okay.
So there's three documents posted. One's just a generic set of sample outreach text. One is a sample press release, and one is a sample one-pager that could be used for the HLN news. But that doesn't mean that that's what you have to do, or there's other things you want to do.
I think for town meeting for, so are we talking handouts for town meeting? For people that go to deliberative? Sorry?
I think we did that last year. So would you want the one-page for handout? Actually, you have to decide.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty much covers everything on there.
This one?
Press release. The text is pretty similar in both of them, I would think, correct?
Yeah.
It's just a different format. I think for something to hand out, to hand out to people, I think the, what's this one? The-
The HLN one-pager.
The HLN one-pager is just a little easier to follow flow and folding and all that, so maybe we make copies to hand that out. And is this what we're looking at, to be the insert for the HLN, too? Or is there something?
Yeah.
Can we just add something on there about asking for volunteers for the planning board?
Oh.
As long as we're sending this out to the whole town? Preferably on the top in big bold letters.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everything else can be small.
Okay.
And then I guess the press release would be something that we submit over to the HLN the Friday before. Is that something that I have to submit to them?
Is that the insert, you mean?
No, the, the press release one, to have in a paper as a letter to the editor? Or is that, what's traditional?
Distribution to all the media outlets?
So would the HLN actually publish that, or?
I don't know, I don't think we did that last year.
Do we have a press release last year? Or is it just something new?
I know I drafted one, because I recycled it.
If you could ask at the press release that the HLN would put that in for election?
Or use that as the basis to write an article about what we're doing?
Yeah.
Maybe you should put that in earlier. Because we're having, we're having an insert for March.
Insert should be before, yeah, closer to voting day, because people are just gonna forget about it by then.
So get the press releases out as early as possible.
Maybe do it before deliberative?
Give reporters at the great media outlets a chance to come and interview us and learn what we're doing. Write fabulous articles, news trucks up in the parking lot.
You can take that over.
No, thanks.
Alright, so the press release will do before deliberative, so maybe the Friday before. If they could do that. And then the stuffer in the HLN would be the Friday, not the one right before, well, auction's Tuesday, right? Alright, so the Friday before the Tuesday? And the speaking points are just for our general consumption, correct? Just as a cheat sheet for us?
Yeah. Do you want me to add to the press release a plea for volunteers as well?
Sure.
Okay.
Don't think it's sounding too desperate, just.
Please come share your thoughts and join the board.
Yeah, that's perfect. Anything else for town meeting preparations, Joan, or?
No, I just, you know, if you guys wanted to do anything else, I just want to make sure I had it ready for you.
Yep, besides just the slides for?
Yeah.
Time slot doesn't work for me, 10:00 AM is too early. Can we push it out to like 1:00?
For what?
Town meeting?
The deliberative? Would you like it at 1:00?
I'd like it at 1:00.
I hope you're on cable, right?
So that's at 10:00 AM? Okay, so prep slides. I also need to do warrant articles. Joan, do you know what the deadline is for warrant articles?
No, I don't, it's probably, he asked me how many we had, because he asked to do the number, and I don't know what the deadline is.
Okay.
And for, we never changed anything really with multifamily besides the actual boundary areas more defined, but all of these don't touch that specific, they don't go that deep?
They, well, actually they do, if you look and, please read what I wrote, because I don't, you know, it's really hard to write the boundary when it's, you follow the brook, then you go down Albuquerque, then you go across Page Road, then you go to the town line, and cross the town line to 3A and back up. That doesn't read very succinctly. So what I have written is, hold on. The proposed district boundaries are the residential, commercial, and transitional districts north of Leech Brook and the residential, commercial, and transitional districts east of 3A and south of Chase Brook, west of Albuquerque, then south of Page Road.
Can we, if we're handing this out, can we make it a front-back flyer on the back? Put the map, and on the bottom, put, remember you had the map numbers?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so they could flip it over and see the map and draw it out where these are, and then the bottom, put the actual, that list of a hundred-something things that, remember we had the hearing? You had the list of all the, or is that just too much to put in there?
The list of all what?
No, it was the areas that were affected, the property, the, there was something that you handed out.
Was that a zoning change, though?
Yeah, the spreadsheet or something, if I recall.
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you not want to be that specific?
You know, I didn't go back and requery out what parcels. Actually, I did, actually I did do a quick query, and I got, so that I could do the whole count to see whether we triggered the new law where you had to do individual notifications to property owners. So I did do a quick query to see the count of properties that were included within, and we definitely well exceeded the threshold, and then some. So, didn't, so we didn't have to do that.
So why don't you just on the back, maybe, since it's north and south, instead of having a whole map of Litchfield, maybe have a north section and a south section?
Do some zoom-ins, yeah.
Zoom it in with the roads? And they could see the actual roads?
Very easy to do. So on the back, I'll do a zoom-in map. This is, I'm assuming, being printed black and white?
Yes.
Alright, so I'll do something that'll reproduce well in black and white.
Yeah, the middle, we don't care about, because it's not affected in the middle, so.
Alright. Okay.
And obviously the press release, we're not going to do that, because that won't transition very well. But something we hand out at deliberative, that would be helpful.
Okay. I don't think I go into detail about, I think in the press release, I just say in the northern and southern ends of the town. Yeah.
That's enough for a press release.
Yeah.
And is this page, can we put this on the website, too, with a link?
This, yeah, we could.
So once it's all done, you have the maps on the back? And then maybe the press release, the press release refers to the website, doesn't it?
There is a map online, it's the little, it's the little tiny map that shows the entire town that's embedded with the draft multifamily ordinance, that is online. But I'll do the, I can put the one-pager summary with the mini zoom-in maps on as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And the, please. Yep, and the press release maps out to the planning board section of the site. Just make it as, when it's on the site, just as in-your-face as you can, so it's not hard to find.
Okay.
Just, so if they go up, it's easily accessible.
Okay.
It'd be great, thank you. Anything else for town meeting prep? Okay, next on the agenda is master plan update, last revised in 2002. So obviously, some things have changed. How much of this has to be redone? And like you said, we've done pieces over the last few years. Are you looking for a framework for this year, like what, what's too much to bite off?
This was Tom's idea.
Oh, okay, then you can run with it.
Well, it's supposed to, if you notice, it's supposed to be done every five to 10 years.
Yep, so it's light.
So we have to go through and clear out some of the stuff that's not written anymore, update a lot of the stuff in there, just make sure that we do get it up to date. Something, it's gonna take some time, but the project will just pick at it as we go along.
How much, planning purpose-wise, how long, how many hours or meetings? If you're just doing what Tom mentioned? And it's harder, you can't give a number, but I mean, is this, if we commit to this for the year?
You can do the little version, you can do the big version. So bottom line, what it comes down to is whatever the town has the means, resources, capacity to do, we, you know, the master plan update can get tailored to that. You know, the big fancy ones definitely are, you know, they're, alright, I'll be honest, there are towns who will, like Milford does a really great job of internally, they, they never send it out. There is not a special budget appropriation for updating the master plan. The town staff, the two planning staff members, every year work on updating one chapter. So every year, they are constantly working on a chapter of their master plan, and as-
To the end, you could work to the beginning.
Exactly, and as they complete each chapter, they, they adopt that chapter as a new chapter and replace the old, the old one. So that, you know, they've got multiple different timeframes, you know, that their master plan's been done with him. There are other communities that have had massive appropriations of, I will not joke, $100,000 that they've sent their master plan out to a consultant and done kind of the big fancy version. So there's no one answer to that. Like Tom was saying, if you guys wanted to pick out one chapter at a time, that's definitely something we could kind of fit in, but it wouldn't, you know, it might take, you might be able to do one chapter in a year, it might take longer to do a chapter, you know, just depending on the amount of time that goes into it, the amount of outreach that you guys do. But generally, we could probably squeeze one chapter in during the year. So that's, you know, something we could do, we could work towards, and coming, coming off of our, just having done the regional plan, we've got a lot of the base data and the background information already collected, so that kind of gives you a jumpstart. In addition, then you've got all of the outreach and public input that you collected as part of your CPG grant work, that gives you a huge jump forward on the vision and goals portions, which is-
That's why I figured some ideal time to start getting into it, because we have the resources.
Right, the two mandatory chapters of a master plan is the vision component and the land use component. Those are the two mandatory chapters. And then after that, there's, put the link in there for, for the relative statutory sections, there's a whole long list of different optional chapters that you can have. Some communities do all of them, some communities don't, some just focus on those areas that are the greatest, you know, issues within the community.
Okay, but I think it's definitely on the plan for next year. And I think the goal of a chapter a year is, obviously if you finish one quickly, then there's nothing stopping us from going to chapter two.
Right.
There's only eight chapters, and we've got a 10-year window to turn this thing through. If we take a chapter a year, it's realistic to keep it fresh.
So is it, if that is updated, like if we do a chapter and then it's done in 2015, that means the master plan is updated partially? But you do each chapter one year, approve it, vote on it, move it forward? So your master plan is always current, because there's always something that was just approved? Joan, do you have, is that a lot of work? Do you have, is that something feasible to help us? It is? Okay. Alright, I think that should be the plan.
So what first steps would you like to take? What would you like to look at first?
Chapter one? Is the vision in chapter? Is the vision separate from the chapters?
I don't know. I gotta look at the link. Come on.
Where's the vision?
Wake up. Current master plan. Thinking, thinking, thinking.
Things like population and housing should be pretty easy to get through, because it's just statistically based.
All of the existing conditions data would be really easy.
Yeah.
Community facilities, wasn't it all done now with the impact fees and the CIP and all that? That's all tied into that?
Yeah.
That's two chapters we could work through pretty quickly with just what we've accumulated for data recently.
And land use was- And land use was the CPG, right?
Yeah, you've pretty much so done the future land use component through CPG. Um, it'd be existing land use, like we did like a partial, um, review of existing land use conditions, um, through, with the CPG work, but that's not, you know.
So we don't have to go chronologically?
No.
Okay. Why don't we hit the ones where the data we collected most recently, just so it doesn't go out of date?
Okay, so we're...
Land use?
Land use.
The, the CPG grant. Community, we could probably get two done this year, community facilities, because all that was done with the impact fees, a lot of it.
Yep.
Maybe do those two for this year, or try, start with land, if we have time, go to community facilities?
That'd be, so that'd be impact fees and you also have the CIP. That would be the kind of the key data sources for those, for that chapter.
Yeah. And is that gonna be ready when?
CIP's supposed to be this summer. So maybe that's something to pick up?
Start with land use and do that first?
Yeah, and now what about, um, vision? Like the overall, the overall vision, goals, objectives, that side of things? Do you just, you don't have like a...
You have executive summary.
Vision section?
No. This is more or less spread out for the whole thing.
It's woven throughout like a tapestry.
Yeah. There's vision section, so... It's in your executive summary.
Yeah.
I think to a certain degree, you could update the executive summary and, and the vision, because I think you've got quite a bit, um, from CPG to update the executive summary.
So why don't we have executive summaries the first thing we do, and then...
It'll also be like...
The land one, land use.
Okay.
And those two will rely on the CPG information?
Yep.
Before it gets out of date.
Okay.
That's probably enough for next year, or this year?
Yeah.
For next year.
Yeah.
And then if we go after that to community facilities, then the CIP should be done and all that should be done, so that could slide into community facilities for sixteen?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Good.
Okay.
I'm reading this, I, I can hear it in Al Raciyo's voice. He was the, uh, the chair of the, uh, the planning board at the time that this was, uh, approved.
Okay.
All right, um, anything else for master plan? We have a plan. All right, next on the agenda is possible amendments to site plan subdivision regulations.
So this is just kind of like a behind-the-scenes laundry list that Jonah and I have been keeping?
Okay.
Um, that every time we get an application, um, we review something, we go, oh, that's gonna be fixed. So that, we thought that, um, be good to just throw it all together, kind of give you our, our list of things that have, have proven to have either errors or stumbling blocks or, um, other things along the way to improve the process, um, and what you want to do with these, if you want to fix, some of them are really quick fixes. Um, some of them might take a little bit more. But I don't think that any of these are, I don't think any of them are substantial. By and large, they're pretty much so housekeeping.
And the process involved with this, is this something that, as we decide what to do, it goes to public hearing?
Yes, so...
To make any of these changes, but not to the, not to deliberate or work with the ballot, this is just...
The zoning ordinance changes, those would be, um, deliberative and town meeting. So they would not be things that we'd have to be rushing out to do now, they'd be for
Next year.
Next year, for a year from now, um, if you wanted to, to do any of those. Um, so for example, under the zoning changes, the fences and retaining walls, um, they're considered structures and they're not allowed in the front and side setbacks.
Uh-oh.
Makes it kind of hard.
So, uh... Put two and two together, how many non-conforming uses do we have?
The whole town?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah.
Before we, um, can you put this ongoing document as a live document on the site, so it's there weekly on the bottom left? You know, you have excavation and all that, and that way, we always have this list to refer to?
Sure.
And it's just in one static spot?
Okay.
Um, town-wise, in terms of how we function, are there certain things on here that we should maybe address? Because we have a public hearing coming beginning of February? So if you had a priority list of things, I would say the zoning ones we're not gonna touch.
Um, none of them are actually drafted, so, um...
How about just that one that we don't need six copies of every...
That's a good point. So this, the subdivision and site plan review regulations, this is, this is one change, it's just got like all the details and notes here. There's three different sections between the subdivision and site plan regulations that require, that set forth the requirements for submission. Um, and for example, with the, um, Hamel circle applications that we've had, you, not only were we getting six full copies of those really thick plan sets, we were also getting six full copies of their alteration of ter- terrain permits, which are literally a book. Um, and we don't need six full copies of their DES applications, two, you know? My guess would suffice. Lou definitely looks at those, and we need one for the town office. Um, you know, the plan sets, yeah, we need, I think in the end, we decided that we do need six copies of the initial plan sets, but not the revisions, because we counted out who needs them.
This just mentions home occupations, though.
That's the, that's the second place, because home occupations also require six copies.
Home occupation would go down to one because, or two.
Yeah.
Because we put all on the site now.
Okay, so it's still one at a time for the subdivision regulations, how many copies would be the ideal number?
Yeah, I guess six for the initial, but then the final and anything after, only like four.
So where are we changing this? Because yes, uh, the first bullet says section five-ten flat standards?
Yeah.
Six copies, we keep in that, or is that, is that what you're referring to?
That's what we need to change. So perhaps it would be applicant shall file six copies, um, for the initial plan submittals and four for subsequent submittals and for state. And only, and then it doesn't specify the number of copies for, um, state permits. So for those, I mean, I think we could specify, then just say, and only two copies of state permit applications?
Actually, maybe only one.
Maybe only one? Well, does Lou usually look at, like, when they have the drainage calculations?
Yeah, if it's, if it's drainage, but alteration of terrain, it doesn't have the drainage in there, but that's gonna be in a storm order.
Okay. Right.
I guess, I guess two.
Okay.
Jonah, what do we require for as bills? How many copies?
I think you could get three, because Jack and Seattle gets one on roads. Never keep one or two.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
So procedurally, is this something that has to be defined more specifically, or is this enough this evening that we could?
That could put a draft together for the next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, and then would that be enough time before the public hearing in February?
Yeah.
It would be? Okay. Is there anything else on this that you want to throw in the public hearing besides the six copies? I mean, do you have enough time between now and the next meeting to draft anything else, or are you busy enough with town?
Um...
With deliberative?
Well, the appendix A, first bullet, we could probably do pretty quickly, because that's just changing, um, no, this is something that Lou spotted, that there was a, an error in the sample calculation.
Okay.
Um, and that's something that we could do pretty quickly. He, he gave us the correct duty answer.
So we put that one on also?
So...
And the second one, the granite curb intersections exhibit B and C?
I think that's something that requires a little bit more debate.
Yeah, that needs to be talked about.
Because, you know, in this instance, it's the, um, that there's some concern about the granite curb as it's displayed in a couple of the exhibits in the, um, in the regulation. And so there's concern that the plows will pull them out. And so if you don't have granite curves, what do you have instead? Is kind, is the debate that you have to have and, and kind of come up with an alternative, um, design to present to applicants in the ordinance, if you're going to change what's in there. Okay.
And the zoning, we're waiting on the appendix I, or is that appendix one?
Uh, I.
Okay. Um, this probably needs more conversation then.
So, um, let's see, what do we have here? So this is just something that's more, um, kind of procedurally. So one of the things, just in terms of seeing applications coming in, um, and the varying, um, degrees of quality to which, um, things are being written and presented. Um, we've got, um, a conditional use permit application that it's really just a, um, cover sheet, it's just the base information. Uh, and notice that applicants could use a little bit more guidance in better structuring their argument as to, you know, meet how they have demonstrated that they've met the, the required conditions to be granted the conditional use permit. Um, and so how to kind of frame that and structure that. Um, you know, simply stating, I should have, I should be granted this because I want it and my development doesn't work otherwise, is inadequate. You know, you have to demonstrate that you've met the conditions. Um, and so, you know, one of the things that board can do to help the applicant to that end is just simply kind of script, not scripted out, but create somewhat of an outline that they can fill in the blanks and there's some prompts. Um, you know, think back to school, have some writing prompts, um, that will help them fill in the information, give them some ideas to what you're looking for, um, in, in terms of response. Um, there's, just to kind of help with this, I pulled a couple examples, um, from different communities, you know, none of them do it perfectly. Uh, so I thought they, you know, there were a few out there that had a couple different ideas that you could call from. Um, and then this also relates to the next item, is having a waiver request application. And this idea came from the most recent application that you had, that was a dual application, the Litchfield-Hudson. Um, and they had a whole series of waivers that they had submitted to Hudson as well. And I was looking at their application materials in Hudson and, and their waiver request form. And here was a great waiver request form that said, what provision are you requesting a waiver from? Now tell me, how has, you know, how does the strict enforcement of this provision place a hardship on you? And how is what you're proposing to do, it's still in the spirit and intent of the regulation? Um, and how would granting this waiver, um, further that, um, intent of, of the regulation? Um, so there, there are some statutory, um, kind of standards that an applicant has to meet in order to be granted a waiver, or for the planning board to be authorized to, to approve a waiver. And some of your, uh, waiver applications you've received are very well-written, some of them are a little on the sparse side. Um, so again, this would be just another way of providing some prompts to the applicant to take the guesswork out of it and help them just organize their, their argument so that they're, they're better, better providing you information.
I think that's a good idea, and I don't, I mean, is there a reason we can't just replicate what we saw in Hudson and...
Oh, we can totally steal Hudson's application. I mean, I'd call them and ask and make sure, you know, John doesn't mind, um, but...
You can change a couple commas or a period or something.
Change the logo.
Yeah, we change, we change the town of Hudson.
That's good enough.
So...
So do you want to have maybe as a plan, we're gonna do the, the copies and the math error? We'll have those ready for the next meeting, so it goes to public hearing beginning of February?
Yep.
And then the other items, the zoning and the appendix I and the new appendix, appendix items, start drafting those for meeting in the not-too-distant future?
Yeah.
Maybe after deliberative?
Yeah, so like look at a...
Oh, there's anyway after February.
So maybe look at a draft in March or April?
Yeah, first meeting in March.
Okay.
Second meeting in March, doesn't matter. And if you can just make this a live document on the site, as stuff, we pass it and moves forward, it's gone, just delete it from this document. And this is kind of a punch list of things that we want to improve. But nice job, I like that, makes it very easy to follow. Anything else you want to talk about with amendments or site plan subdivision regulations, or was that the just? The just? Okay. Next item on the agenda is return of escrow fund balance for Arthur Row.
We saved the last bills, um, that site plan, it was approved in September or October.
Is that on here as a document to open?
No.
Okay. So what's the fund balance?
It was about eighteen hundred dollars.
And at this point, there's, there's no reason why we need to?
Don't specify the exact amount, because it just will be charged, it just will be added to it.
Okay. So just generally, the refund for that? Okay. Take a motion, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, uh, I move that we refund the escrow, uh, fund balance for, uh, Arthur Row.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries four-zero-zero. Next item on the agenda is the approving the December sixteen minutes. I did not see anything on there, I don't know if any other member did. Looks good to me. Very detailed. Take a motion on the minutes?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of December sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as written?
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
Aye.
Uh, carries three-zero-one. Okay, and any other business is the next item on the agenda, the lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee Correspondence, which we believe is in the packet.
Whoever is applying. So...
Yep.
So, I still need a tutorial on, put the names and addresses in the legal resources, it comes up, I'm gonna have to get the heading off there, on the side. Um, I've asked Jason about five times.
So should this be a component of the application?
It almost sounds like this is their request notice, yeah.
Is that standard in any other towns? Like having this as a component of the application as a step in the process? And/or how much land, well, it's everything along the Merrimack.
So how, how early do they want the, um... We really can't, we don't have a plan until the application comes in.
Yeah, they're saying, they're asking that when members of the board become aware of initial planning for such projects, that you ask the relevant owners or developer to informally get in touch with Limerlac. Um, or ca- us to contact them as well.
Well, we can't, I mean, we could ask them, we can't make that a condition of approving it then, right? I mean, is this more of an advisory thing to pass the information along to the applicant? And whether they contact them or not is...
If, well, if an application falls within the corridor, it must be sent
Okay.
to Limerlac for our comment.
Well, for instance, we just, the one that we just talked about last week with Kevin?
Right.
We wouldn't submit anything yet, or would we just notify them, what would we do?
I guess just notify them that there's something coming, coming down the line. It's kind of awkward, though, I think, if it's not an official application.
Because you can't give them a plan, we don't have a
Right.
plan submitted yet, we always have...
Little, little clarification on that, that, from the meeting the other last couple weeks ago.
Right.
They want to have as much notice as they can get
Yeah.
so that they can plan. I guess they're very upset for the, uh, development in Hudson and Litchfield because they want to right away down through there.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be in somebody's yard.
Yeah.
And the people don't want it. And they weren't notified ahead of time. So they can talk to people and get it.
Yeah. So, you know, this is, this is a challenge, I know that it's not... Yeah. So, you know, this is, this is a challenge, I know that it's not just Limerlac, it's all of the um, local river advisory committees struggle with because of the existing kind of timing that exists in statute and in each community's regulations for how an application comes into the town. And you have your sixty-five day clock, but then you, they meet only once a month. And so it makes it very challenging for a group that only meets once a month to time their review to be able to respond when a board might be meeting and acting on something every two weeks. Um, and so this is just, it's simply a challenge that they face um, i- in their own structure. Um, so they're just, I think they're just trying to open channels of communication um, to be as proactive as they possibly can, um, so that they can do a better job um, in fulfilling their obligations. But for example, we had a kind of a, a draft application that came in um, that was just a, here, this is for staff, what do you think? Um, preliminary um, conversation that Joan, Kevin and I sat and looked at and then provided some feedback back to the applicant. And as part of that, we said, you're on the river, you're gonna need to notify Limerlac, we recommend you do so as soon as possible.
And they affect their plans.
Right, so
So they, they had a plan, but it wasn't anywhere near any
No.
By law, so maybe when they get
Yeah.
A little further along, they can submit it.
Right.
But would it affect what they do if they talk to these people? They affect how they originally made their plan, right? Depending on what they find out?
Yeah, on this one, no.
But when they submit to the planning board, they should be submitting to Limerlac that day too.
Exactly, as part of their submission. But I don't think
Is that a requirement by law?
I don't know, and I'm trying to think of what, what the official kind of transmittal process is for things to go to them normally.
Interesting question for, for Limerlac, is there, is there a process on that submission?
Well, it, 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 it does say it is part of the RSA.
Yeah. Yeah.
They do code RSA four thirty, forty-three.
Forty-three, shout and form.
Is it four eighty-three?
Yeah, forty-three, colon eight dash little a, which states municipal officials, boards and agencies shall inform um, LECs of actions that they are considering and managing. So I guess that's, you know, if it comes into us and we check that box, then we've got to send it over. Then we're required to send it to Limerlac, but the challenge is
Why couldn't we put it in our ordinance that same, under submission, that you're in a quarter, river, quarter mile to the river
That's true.
You submitted to Limerlac, the applicant's
And put the, put the burden on the applicant, because otherwise you're wait, you know
Otherwise it's a week, could be a week.
It could, yeah, there could be a week delay before we kind of actually pull it up and look on the computer screen and, and look to see if it intersects that quarter mile buffer area. So, whereas the applicant definitely knows.
Is that delineating that quarter mile buffer area within, from the riverbank?
Mm-hmm.
Tributaries don't count, just the river itself?
Just the designated river itself.
Okay. Because we've got brooks and streams running across the town.
They don't count. Otherwise you'd be like, everything would be going
But they're more interested in something that has a tributary going into the river, that, you know, Limerlac gets a lot more interested, something like that, runoff and
Right.
But as far as just the, the basic requirement for reporting to them, just within a quarter mile
Is a river, right?
Mm-hmm.
So if you want to add that to regulations, is
Add that to the to-do list?
Yeah, make that in, in the bullet on there. Have you discussed with Hudson what they're gonna be doing, because obviously that was triggered by?
No, I could also call um, Sarah Marshant in Nashua to see what they're doing as well. Because I know he's met, um, the chairman's met with Sarah.
And how they submit, who submits and who's responsible on the timeline and
They, they've got different scenario over there though. Because their river is not part of it. It's Gauhegan and Merrimack, not the Nashua.
Right.
Well, the Merrimack
But the Merrimack, yes, through Nashua. Yeah.
Sounds like a plan. Anything else regarding that, or we've got some talking points to move forward? And is there any other business? Gentlemen, gentlemen, board, anyone?
Bob's letter, could be a plea from
Yeah. Um, as you can see from watching, four people sitting here, there should be seven, we are looking for planning board members. So if you're at home and you want to join us, first or third Tuesday of the month, um, come in, sit on a meeting and hopefully, uh, hopefully stay. So we are looking for members, um, information can be found on the website also. Very good. Anything else? Okay, take a motion to adjourn?
Motion is ready.
You have a second?
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, carries four zero zero. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January twentieth at seven PM. Have a great evening.